To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome everybody. I need a motion from the board to approve attendance. Thank you, you have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close the most, agenda approved, action items, that is closed session, we've got some closed session minutes from January twenty-four, twenty-nineteen. I wish to amend any amendments now, I need a motion to approve. Second. Ashley.
Burr?
Yes.
Dara?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. We also got something else coming out of a closed session. We have a discipline here and I will read what I need the motion to be for, to approve the expulsion of Student A for 1.5 school years, as the remainder of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year and the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, with a contingency to attend Sangamon County State Schools. Also approve that Student A be given the opportunity to apply for readmission to GHS to the fall of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. The decision to readmit will be based on appropriate grades, attendance, and behavior at the Sangamon County State School program. Student A does not meet the attendance, behavior, and effort requirements set in place at Sangamon County State Schools. May be removed from that program and be called for traditional two-calender-year expulsion from all academic programs. Have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, you have a second.
Second.
Dara?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes. Moving on to communications, we've got some good news. We've got an athletic director.
Well, dear Dusty, are you here?
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna get to embarrass you a little bit. Yeah. I'd like to read something on behalf of Dusty, it's up on the screen, but I'll read it aloud. It says, "The National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association is pleased to announce that Dusty Burton, Director of Athletics at Ball Chatham, SR-CUSD-5, has been recognized by this association as a certified athletic director. During this distinction, Dusty has demonstrated the highest level of knowledge and expertise in the field of interscholastic athletic administration. The voluntary certification process includes thorough evaluation of candidate's educational background, experienced professional contributions, as well as a rigorous, comprehensive written examination. Dusty is one of the elite group of interscholastic athletic administrators nationwide to attain this level of professionalism. The NIAAA is a national professional organization consisting of fifty state athletic administrator associations and more than ten thousand individual members. It is dedicated to promoting professional growth of high school athletic administrators preserving the educational nature of interscholastic athletics and the place of these programs in secondary school curriculum." So, without further ado, I'd like to certainly acknowledge that accomplishment and it's pretty impressive. Thank you very much.
Dusty, congratulations. Moving on to four-two, good news, we've got Special Education, our annual report. Hi, it's welcome.
All right. Technology is always our friend, right? Good evening, Superintendent Wood, President Hoffman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I have come to give a snapshot annually, give you a picture of how we're doing in special education.
Now, where are you?
I was going to, but it's, yeah, it went to sleep.
All right, well, thank you again for this opportunity. I want to say in opening remarks at least that we do have a senior district because hearing Dusty's extra accomplishments and knowing all the extra things that our team members here in the room and all of our supporters in all facets of our district work, we meet the expectations and I think go beyond that so many times just because that's the quality that we desire to have for our work and it really does show. In terms of special education, we are a unique subset of our services to students. Of course, we're in every school, in every classroom really, in every level of services within our district. We do have a lot of regulatory mandates with state and federal requirements that are part of our reality. Those are there for a lot of good reasons, but also reasons that make us do things a certain way. We operate with a combination of local maintenance of effort, which is a requirement of statute to require local districts to provide some of their own funds to provide services to students with disabilities. But we also have the IDEA grant funding, which is federal money that flows through our state and is allocated to our district. First and foremost, we are providing a free and appropriate public education for students with disabilities, which creates equal access and opportunity for students to be involved in our schools and to get great education. We are also monitored regularly and meet state performance plan indicators, which are then indicative of how the state of Illinois is doing, but we always get a micropossum of how Ball Chatham School is doing on a number of these indicators. We operate with transparency in as many ways as possible. I will say always with special education, the only limit is when we get down to a subset or student level where we cannot really disclose specifics of how and why certain things have been decided in terms of program. But we certainly undermine leadership and with my sort of philosophy about things, it's definitely a partnership and we want people to understand the why, but also the ways that we do things. One thing that has changed also in terms of the funding piece is with evidence-based funding, that has been a change that's impacted a lot of areas of how local budgets are determined and all of that. We had some special education funds that were collapsed into evidence-based funding, so I think these are the first few years of that happening, so we're beginning to learn more about that. When I mentioned our state and federal monitoring, this includes, but certainly is not the exhaustive list, the things that we make sure we are meeting and often exceeding the requirements of the state and federal government. We watch the percent of all students with IEPs within our whole district. Our percentage is around ten percent of our total school population, which is a good moderate level, it's not exceeding the high and it's not exceeding the low, meaning we are not over identifying in general, and I don't think we're missing kids necessarily either, so we monitor that very closely. We provide the least restrictive environment always in terms of our programming, that I want to give credit and recognition to all of our partners in that because I've come to your district this year and I really have never seen the level of inclusion that we do in this district. And I say "we" because I've come onto that team, but it is such a tremendous honor and I think a recognition of the quality and the values and the division that we have for all students. When we start hearing stories about students that do not have identified disabilities asking about and caring for their students and friends that are in special programs, it's extremely heartwarming, but it also tells us the kind of culture that we're building in Chatham, that our kids are winning that. So, I just, I feel like that's a huge thing, we'll get past the black and white of programs and details, that we're creating a culture for our kids that's really positive. And that's also fostered by our adults in the room and on our teams that do that and create that too. We also have a reach into early childhood education, we monitor outcomes there, whether it's in transitioning from early childhood services into the K-12 system. We have increasing monitoring pieces on that just because we know that early childhood education is crucial for getting a positive and strong start to education. And so, again, we have lots of partners in the district doing that work, but it's also a part of special education. We also follow high school completion data to make sure that outcomes long-term for our students that lead to something meaningful in life, whether that be meaningful employment or post-secondary education and the highest level independence that they can achieve. Other really exciting aspects, we do a lot of assessment, attainment of adequate year of progress, which we do through state assessments of various kinds. It's that season coming upon us to do the annual assessment season with, it used to be PARC, but now it's called the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. We also have some alternative assessment formats that is called Dynamic Learning Map for some students for assessing science. We're also assessing within our high school population, those SAT and PSAT programs to look at where it is rated late in their educational career. Finally, the last two there, I mentioned the post-secondary outcomes, but another one that we monitor especially for students with disabilities is the awareness extension and expulsions to make sure that we aren't inadvertently missing something that can support kids to do well as a state connected in school. That's paramount to part of our job as well. So, how does this get done? We have always a team and a village around our kids that involves general education staff, leadership, parents, family, community, but also a lot of specialized education staff. We have district-wide, a few of these are broken down, just, we have single people in a couple of these roles, and we have vision itinerant, hearing itinerant, psychologists, social workers, of course, our special education teachers, speech pathologists, we have coordinators of our special education process and the director position. Also, with related services and specialized services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, we have an administrative assistant who's really a crucial piece of our operations. She helps with the financial tracking, she helps with budgets, or I mean bills and things like that. She's also a great outreach for our staff to be a contact person to help with materials or needs and that sort of thing. And then we have a number of paraprofessionals that support our classrooms and our programs and our students on whatever level it's warranted there. I will say, because of the amount of compliance and monitoring requirements and legal things that we are required to do in special education, there is a lot of paperwork, there's a lot, and we mean paperwork not just to have something to generate, but purposeful paperwork that has things that involve making sure that parents' rights are very clear, that it's clear that decisions are made as a team, that decisions are made always with least restrictive services and programming at the forefront, and also that we are making sure it's always child-focused. So, there's a lot of parameters to that and every meeting involves an awful lot of that. And that's where I wanted to kind of key in our coordinator positions there, the linchpins of a lot of that work to make sure we are staying within our timelines and also doing good quality work. We also have case managers within our educator staff who also help with those logistics. But we're looking at this year, we're all involved, over a thousand meetings that we're going to be accomplishing by the end of the school year. We're right at a little over a thousand right now and I know the spring season is very busy. And so, when we break that down, there's a number of the people on that list as well as our general education partners and a lot of times administrators who are sitting in those meetings as well. And it just kind of is a number that is striking when we think of a district our size, but we are really touching, coming to the table an awful lot. I want to say also that's a big part of our parent outreach because essentially every meeting, we typically have parents involved at the table and we are having really good face-to-face conversations, but also that we are required to make sure that happens as much as possible too. Here's our numbers in terms of student snapshot. The challenging part of a lot of our work is that it's a moving target a bit because we always have pending eligibility's and other dismissals that are ongoing. For special education services, at point in time, I believe the December first child count, we were at four hundred and seventy-three students with IEPs. We counted also the Section 5 of Core Plans, which are not strictly special education, they are really plans to support kids much more in terms of accommodations through general education settings. But those are also sometimes involving doing some additional assessment to make sure we're not missing anything in terms of a need that could be serviced through special education or should be serviced through special education. When those numbers seem fuzzy at times because at any point in time they'd be a little bit different just because our mandate is to do child fine from age three to twenty-one, so at any time it could be taking up an additional case or an additional eligibility as well as kids moving out of our services, which is one of the celebrations. And we have that happen and it's really exciting to see that we've done the work and helped kids move back into real independence, but those are there for reference as well. Just a vision of where we're going, I really am excited to be on board to write, help write the next chapter of our services. We do have an extraordinary district. We know that because our families often tell us that. We get inquiries about coming to Chatham, to Ball Chatham Schools in terms of the quality education for all students, especially in and in addition to that, our special education students. So, moving forward, there's just always work to make sure that we're staying engaged internally and externally with colleagues, our team members, our partners in this work. We definitely are student-focused. Families are a huge priority in terms of staying connected and working together because every situation, every meeting happens within a context and our families are crucial for that, as well as our community outreach. We get a lot of support in Illinois-Chatham from our community, which is a great positive as well. We'd like there to be also a positive image of our program, so that's what we focus on. I want to continue consistent and focused leadership. I think through times have changed, a lot of times that's where we need to get our footing again and set a vision for the future in that, you know, we have big dreams to do it all at once, but it takes a lot of small steps and living up to the promises we make and the goals that we set, so that's part of our focus and continuing in this work. Continuing consistent and needs-based program development, I think the healthy thing, and that's an indispensable point, is to be adaptive and responsive to changing needs. And we know that education is not the same as it was five years ago or even two years ago, and our kids are changing, so I think that's part of also the continuing work at the department is to make sure that we're adaptive and doing things that are really needed, not just because we've always done that for a long time. So, just checking ourselves on that. A big part of this is also to build and provide a cohesive and targeted professional development plan at all levels. And so, with my colleagues in the district and some key players who are great places to help drive that, we're trying to scope out our plans for the coming school year in terms of what kinds of professional development can help us reset skills, improve skills, share learning that really impacts how we serve students. And there's really been a lot of good ideas shared around that. And my vision is to do that at all levels, no matter what your role is, that we can help people learn and I think doing that together is really a good demonstration of leadership, so. We could talk a long, long time about special education. We have, I have just a handout from a previous meeting about ten days ago that was a hundred and thirty-nine pages, it's really, there's a lot of detail in there, so I could go always to more detail, but I also wanted to keep this at a higher level in terms of just the big picture of where we're at with our programs.
This is an excellent report. And I have, it's just an excellent report, I really appreciate your taking a global view because, you know, we approve, you know, we approve personnel joining and we also have to approve reservations, et cetera, so there are always bloating factors. So, this was really nice to get a global picture of our staff, I really never had that. And I think this is, to the best of my recollection, I think this is the first formal special ed presentation that as a board member we've had the opportunity, so thank you very much. You'll set a very nice pattern, legacy for the future, so thank you.
Always willing to come back, I know that's not something that we all volunteer for, but it's so important, your passion is really to communicate the importance of what we do. There's a lot of unsung heroes around kids' extra needs, I may say special needs, extra needs, because all of our kids are general and then we add to that, so I know there's a lot of people that can help tell that story and I'm really excited to do that. All right, thank you.
Questions, Heather? Cynthia, thank you, and we appreciate your time. Moving on to four-three, anybody got anything they want to bring to the board as an agenda item? Yes, it's good, just understand, just keep it under five minutes, give us your name and...
My name is Mary Martworth, I'm a parent here in the Chatham School District, and I would like to address item four-point-two of the agenda. I have a son who is in full-time self-contained special education services here in Chatham and has been for the last thirteen years. I would like to compliment the teachers and paras, speech pass OTs, who have worked with him, they've been phenomenal, they have gone above and beyond. My concern with the board and administration this year is that my son has had a one-on-one designated aide or para-professional assigned to him since he was in ECE at three years age. This year, his position still has not been filled, as far as I know, it has not been posted or posted correctly. I know we can't bring, you know, you can bring the horses to water, but we can't make them drink. I know that paras are very hard to come by. I myself am a special education teacher with a master's level in special education. I do this for a living, I do this twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. I have withheld filing complaint of non-compliance with ISBE and the IDEA compliance officer at ISBE before, to give you guys ample time, the school district reinforced the way over, he has still not received his due services per Illinois Administrative Code, subtitle A, subchapter F, section J, or the IDEA Act as it was reauthorized with subsection B of the obligation of public agency. This is intolerable. You are denying my son his free and appropriate public education. I again understand that there is not always a body to fill every position. I have been unaware that this position has even been posted and upon inquiry through the year, I have not received any confirmation or email back in to confirm that this position has been posted and when or if it was posted, which would favor heavily in you, in your case, if I do file a complaint with the non-compliance officer. I would like you to know that, I'm being honest, I'm giving you a chance to rectify this situation, to get your ducks in a row, and to get my son served. Thank you.
Mind if I ask a couple clarifying questions?
You go, Rader.
We typically don't answer, obviously, because we're a board, but I'm not an expert on special ed, just know that. But I want you to explain to me what you're talking about. So, I know it makes a lot of sense to you, basically your son has an IEP.
He does. He is in a full-time class, that means he spends sixty percent or more of his educational day in a special education setting.
Okay.
And with that, and with his eligibility diagnosis, he requires a one-on-one designated para-professional. The district has been beautiful in the past. They've, with my cooperation, they have provided training to the entire staff, which it also says in his IEP must be fulfilled, but this year, the employment issue is what is at stake here for my son. He has been floated from person to person, para, I'm sorry, para-professional to para-professional, this one-on-one aide in this classroom aide, which is not in compliance with his IEP.
And those numbers you gave us are from the state code?
Those are from the Illinois Administrative Code, which is what the Illinois School Code falls under, and that is what other professional personnel and the Illinois School Code for hiring is what the compliance officer at I, at I, 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 Illinois State Board of Education will follow. They will also follow the IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which was reauthorized, and they will follow the obligations of public agency portion of that which talks about hire. I have spoken with the compliance officer at ISBE and they have informed me that there is no regulation or set policy to say how long a position has to be posted, but it is up to the school and that individual district, it is your obligation to fill that position no matter how long it takes. And every day that that position is not filled, you are in non-compliance. That means you are breaking federal and state law.
Could you repeat your comments about your communication?
I have email documentation with administrations in special ed and I have had one-on-one conversations with, my son is at Glenwood High School.
Okay.
With administrators and staff there. I'm a very, very hands-on, involved parent, and this has been constant through the year. Like I said, I love the school district, I love the people that work with my son, I would not trade them for anything. I understand it's hard to find people to work for subpar pay for hours and in conditions that can be very mentally and physically stressful, I do it for a living myself. But when my son is in your protection and under your board with these regulations, both state and federal, you are obligated to fulfill your it. And I feel that that has fallen way short this year. I have given it ample time to be corrected, it's never been proven.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. So, you're saying that we have to have an individual person, the same person, not a different person?
A one-on-one aide allocated to my son per his minutes listed in his IEP, and the minutes are listed on a total for a weekly basis.
So, it can't be a group that have to be...
No, he is supposed to fulfill a one-on-one aide. And no position has ever been posted or filled for my son. He has been floated from people in the room, from paras in the room, that are not assigned to him, his position has not been listed. As far as I can determine, I'm here, if you have clarification of that, please share it with me, I would love that, but the communications I've had have not proven to have any clarification.
Mary, thank you.
Thank you, guys, again, I do love Chatham School District and I am not in favor of having a stand-up here, but you've got to support these children and you've got to support these staffers who are going above and beyond to provide services for my son that they are not supposed to be.
Anything on the agenda they want to bring to the board at this time? Nope. Okay. Moving on then to consent agenda, I have five-one, five-nine. They want to call it that?
I got to pull five, yes.
Five-eight, five-three. They have? Now, I need a motion to approve five-one, five-seven, and five-nine. You have a second?
Seren?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Dara?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
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 Pat?
Yes.
Five, eight?
Basically, last month I made a comment, or I asked a question, and so I'm following up from last month. And one of the, there's a new policy out, and it's labeled board member term of office. And Dr. Wood, if you recall, I asked that our attorney is looking to this question. It's a new policy, but the first sentence says, "The term of office for a school board member begins immediately after both of the following occur." And then it's, you know, twenty-one day rule, and, you know, board member oath, et cetera. But my question at hand is how, what is the legal interpretation of immediately? And that is something that our attorney needs to specifically advise us on, because as it turns out, by moving our meetings to Thursday, it now turns out that April is the last meeting, it's the last meeting, so it doesn't fall into March. April is the last meeting that retiring board members will be sitting. So how, how is this answered? How does it affect the agenda? What's the procedure? What's the protocol? It's all new. This is all new, so I don't know. Maybe standard practice, past practice is still acceptable and fine. So could you follow up and let us know so that for April?
Sure.
We know that we're doing what we need to do. Okay, thank you.
Okay. You want to make a motion or do that?
I'll, I make that motion to approve, uh, forty-three.
Second, yes, five, eight. Just clarify, I see, wait a second. You're not asking that it be changed?
No. This is press.
Interpretation's fine.
Um, it's, it's press. We have to approve it. I'm just saying, it's normal. Yep. Rayvich?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Moving on, personnel consent. We got six, one, six point two, one. They wish, they wish to pull in that?
I'd like to pull six, nine.
Six, nine, anybody else? Now, any motion to approve six, one, six, eight, six, ten, and six, twenty-one is presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I have a second.
Second?
Thank you. Ashley.
Rayvich?
Yes.
Rur?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Six, nine, Retirement Systems Administration.
Well, I need to make a special comment and note of appreciation to Joe Maltese. He has worked in the district for twenty years. He's seen a lot of people come and go. He's seen a lot of changes in the IT field. He's been extremely nice to me because the nicest way I can say it is, I am IT challenged. So when I would call him at the health desk, he was really nice to me. And he, he remains so, even under extreme, extremely difficult conditions from like nineteen thir- I mean, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, along in there. Anyways, so I do want to thank him for his years of service and his professional demeanor through tough times, so that's all.
I'd, I'd like to, we spoke about this earlier, and that's funny, because he told me on the first night, he said, "You know that Susan Warren lady?"
IT challenged, right? So I am...
No, he didn't, but I would like to speak. Jill's one of the first guys that I really, matter of fact, when I arrived here, we were going under the tech revision and getting things back on track, and Jill's one of the first ones I really built a relationship with, and probably one of the friendliest people I've ever met. And we really, we joke around with each other quite a bit, we see each other in buildings. But beyond all of his, what he does for the district in regards to technology, I have a great deal of respect for Joe because he's a very principled man, has a great deal of integrity. He's respected by everyone. And above all, one thing I love about him, is I love Veterans Day, and I tell you what, Veterans Day comes along, might sound weird, but I really ensee- I really enjoy seeing Joe, because he is dressed to the nines, and he's so proud of his service to his country. And he spends time to talk to students. I love it. His kids come up to him, they want to talk about his uniform, and Jill will take any amount of time just to talk to him. I just too wanted to take a moment to, he will be greatly missed, and he won't be replaced because nobody's going to replace Joe. Give him a hard time down at baseball team. That's one thing I might punch him on. But at the end of the day, truly a valued person. And please, when you do see him, although he's going to be retired, I'm going to encourage him time and time again to make sure that he's here on Veterans Day, because he's a symbol of why we are here and why we have him. I'm going to miss him.
Okay, then we need a motion to approve retirement of our system administrator, Joe. I have a second.
Second?
Rur?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Rayvich?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business. We've got waste management and recycling services. Want to put out an RFP?
Yes, sir. I'd like to seek an approval to go out and bid for the waste management and recycling services. Contact can expire at the end of June issue. It was a part of your contract, and I would like to go back out for three, just because I don't want to find your contract so much. So when I publish this thing, I'm going to publish it. What I've learned is that the recycling pieces, but not all waste management providers can provide recycling services. So if you put them both out together, you're kind of limiting yourself. So when I put it out, I'm going to put out one RFP, and any company can be both pieces or one piece. So I'm just really glad to be with that, when I get laid back.
Any questions? Now, any motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
You got a second?
Second?
Rayvich?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We also got approval to proceed with the building of our STEM labs and steam lab, GMSG.
Yes, sir. I'm seeking approval to go out to bid for the steam lab at GMS, GMS. So initially, we're going to meet the architects and all, and actually, the next Friday, to start the ideas on furniture slash new layout, see if and all of this, so I might put a layout for you, and anticipate this, they can cost enough for one thousand dollars a whole, two hundred thousand dollars for school. And hopefully, banking on it will be done by, enough, enough time for the school to start, but hopefully around the end of July.
Any information, Steve? Have I got any questions, Ellen? I have any second, then? We kind of left you the details of the facilities around meetings, so if you need to know more information, please ask. Dave? I'll go. You got a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ashley.
Seren?
Yes.
Rur?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Rayvich?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Moving on to seven, three, we've got some surplus and non-salvageable equipment.
Actually, Charlotte asked me to present this, and I'm trying to find those, because some of this is, a lot of this is surplus desks that have been stored, tables, GMH tore up. They've been in this district for years and years and years, and what we're asking for is to get rid of a lot of the surplus items, and we're going to turn a lot of it over to the CMS department in Springfield, if they'll take it. And it's some of that, some of the serviceable desks, they're old desks, like really old desks, but they're still serviceable, so I don't know if it's in the wrong place. We're going to offer them to the CMS company, or for other state in Springfield. And also, Josh has a huge piece of this, too.
We'll put ours up first. We'll, we'll get a lot of ours recycled type of deal. And we got a lot of the older LCD screens and things like that that most, a lot of times, people will charge us for to take, but usually, since we have so much, they'll work it out, where they'll take that for free. And the last one we worked with, we put it out to a few to see what they come up with, actually wrote us a check to take some of it. So it's kind of works out where I have to pay someone to take the LCDs that you can't just throw away any longer. So, and like I said, the last company we went through to recycle wrote us a check, wasn't much, but it's still something at the end for getting rid of some of that stuff that it just isn't. It's nothing that we're getting rid of while the tech inventory is usable at this point.
Where's the money from something like this go? Does it depend on what we're getting rid of, where the money goes, or is it always going to a certain fund?
That's probably Charlotte's question, though. I don't know.
To my knowledge, what I know about it is, it goes into, like, for my accounts, if you take something out to Mervis or Scrap Mill or in the case is, the check comes back to us, we give it to the district office, and it goes back into the 20 fund, which is my fund, but it doesn't go to just a single line item. So at the end of the year, say I have $2,000 that we put back in that account, and I end the year with $32,000, or that $2,000 is added on to that $32,000 show, I have a balance of $34,000. That's the way I see it.
That's correct.
That is, okay.
Thanks, Charlotte.
Absolutely.
No problem.
Motion, then? Prove it. I have a second.
I'll second. Rur?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Rayvich?
Yes.
Wurly?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Moving on, communications. We've got future board meeting dates. March seventh, we got, Personnel. Is that going to be an HR meeting? March point four, starting on May eight, point five, starting on May twenty-third. So the Chamber called me today. They're having a Q and A for people that are running for school board, I'm saying on March twenty-first. So I'm going to help you run, so keep you there. Start it out there. I'm still bad.
Well, I've already scheduled my vacation around the March 21st date. I'm only one of seven, but...
Is there vacation?
That's why I'm asking you.
I don't know what are our options. They said their starts at, I believe, 5:30, our meeting's starting at 6:30.
Could they let you go first? I'm as bad as you are, you just have to get your own meeting. I don't think I'm going to skip this meeting, so, but I...
We could delay the start time.
If I'm not there, I have, it's just open for discussion, I told my... It's just, it would just be strange if I, so...
Well, it's always very, very bad. What about that Wednesday, the twentieth? Just moving it one night, just moving it one night ahead of time, if that's what's going to cover for every hour of work for most people. Not saying that's when we move it, can you at least take a peek at the twentieth and see if that, that works for folks?
All right. Me, too. Is there anything they want to bring to the board on any items?
I would like to say something. I don't know how I'm going to get across there, so I can just talk from here, if that's okay.
Yes, that would be fine. Could you just give us your name and...
My name is Dawn Holm. I'm a parent of a student in the district, and I want to thank everyone for coming together with our teachers and working out a contract with them. I know it's not signed yet, but, you know, that, that's a huge thing, and I, I think everybody, you know, it's stressful for everyone. I also want to kind of talk to you about some of the stress these teachers are under with this, and they come to school every day, they greet our children with smiles on their face, and they give us everything they can. And our contract is where it is now. It's getting ready to be signed, but we also have a contract coming forward with our non-certified people. We need bus drivers in this district. We need aides in this district. There's a lot of things that's coming up in this next contract that also needs to be settled. And I know as a parent, there's other parents out here who's going to do just what we are now for these non-certified people as well. So I encourage you to do the same for them as what you've done for our teachers. I also think that we should kind of look at these teachers as, they're also parents in this district, they have children in this district, so when they have parent-teacher conferences or open house, those teachers need to be able to go to their children's open house. And there used to be a policy in this district that their kids would go to that particular school where their parents were, so that they could attend these things. That was pulled. These parents are no longer allowed to go to their open houses. They're no longer allowed to be a part of their own child's education, and I think that's a problem. We're taking away their parental rights. So I just kind of want to throw a little bit out there, let you know, there is a new contract, obviously, as you know, and I want you guys to know, we are here to support them as well.
Dawn, thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
All right, here it goes. I'm going to kind of go off what she is. My name is Lisa Edmison. I'm the mother of four students in this school district. First of all, I also want to thank each and every one of you, the teachers and the school board, for coming together for this tentative contract. I kind of wrote mine down because I really suck at this whole talking thing. I pray that it's the best interest of all parties that this contract gets signed. However, I just want everyone to remember that the future of this district is highly because of these teachers that are in this district. They are fantastic teachers, the counselors are fantastic, the staff is fantastic, and we need each and every one of them to feel appreciated, valued, and taken care of at all times. A few years ago, we were in a financial crisis, as all of you know, and each one of these students, each one of these teachers stepped up at that time, held it together, and came together without hesitation. Now, we all need to reward them for sticking it out. They should not have had to fight months and months for this contract. They should not have had to beg for this contract, but now that they have it, we need to show support all the way around. However, our fight's not over. We need to find the time for these teachers to get lower class sizes, figure out a way to get them more subs, so we don't have four to four students in one class when there's not enough subs. We need to figure out our bus transportation issues and figure out what to do so we can show that Chatham is the best school in this country.
Lisa, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Mary Matt, and on behalf of the entire VCA, I would like to extend our thanks to the board. We greatly appreciate both the time and effort put forth by the members in regard to the negotiation process. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our parents and community members. VCA is in awe of your support, tireless efforts. On behalf of the students of Ball Chatham, we cannot express how fortunate our school community is to have your continued support. Your students are the reason we love all of you educators, and we look forward to continuing to strengthen our relationship as we move together. I also think that we should kind of look at these teachers as, they're also parents in this district. They have children in this district. So when they have parent-teachers conferences or open house, those teachers need to be able to go to their children's open house. And there used to be a policy in this district that their kids would go to that particular school where their parents were, so that they could attend these things. That was cool. These parents are no longer allowed to go to their open houses. They're no longer allowed to be a part of their own child's education. And I think that's a problem. We're taking away their parental rights. So I just kind of want to throw a little bit out there, let you know there is a new contract, obviously, as you know. And I want you guys to know, we are here to support them as well.
Dawn, thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
All right, here it goes. I'm going to kind of go off what she is. My name is Lisa Edmuson. I'm the mother of four students in this school district. First of all, I also want to thank each and every one of you, the teachers and the school board, for coming together for this tentative contract. I kind of wrote mine down because I really suck this whole talking thing. I pray that it's the best interest of all parties that this contract gets signed. However, I just want everyone to remember that the future of this district is highly because of these teachers that are in this district. They are fantastic teachers. The counselors are fantastic. The staff is fantastic. And we need each and every one of them to feel appreciated, valued, and taken care of at all times. A few years ago, we were in a financial crisis, as all of you know. And each one of these students, each one of these teachers stepped up at that time, held it together, and came together without hesitation. Now, we all need to reward them for sticking it out. They should not have had to fight months and months for this contract. They should not have had to beg for this contract. But now that they have it, we need to show support all the way around. However, our fight's not over. We need to find the time for these teachers to get lower class sizes, figure out a way to get them more subs, so we don't have 44 students in one class when there's not enough subs. We need to figure out our bus transportation issues and figure out what to do so we can show that Chatham is the best school in this country.
Lisa, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Mary Mac. And on behalf of the entire VCA, I would like to extend our thanks to the board. We greatly appreciate both the time and effort put forth by the members in regard to the negotiation process. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our parents and community members. The VCA is in awe of your support and tireless efforts. On behalf of the students of all Chatham, we cannot express how fortunate our school community is to have your continued support. Your students are the reason we love all of your educators and look forward to continuing to strengthen our relationship as we move together into the future. I also would like to share that the ratification meeting for the members of the VCA is scheduled for March 11th. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes. Go ahead.
I am a senior at GHS and I just wanted to thank all of the teachers for everything that you guys have done for me and for the future that I will be having when I leave the high school. And just three short ones. I am also the daughter of a school board member. And I see how hard that they work. And I see how hard that this is, that they work every day. I feel, I'm sorry. I see how tired they are when they come home. I see their frustration, like the public thinks that they're heartless and that they don't care about our district, their students. And I just want to let everyone know that they care so much. They wouldn't be doing this unpaid job if they didn't. And these problems, the smaller class sizes, more transportation, they don't get sold overnight. And they're doing their very best they can to help everyone out, so.
Mary, thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Mary Martin here, and I am a parent and a teacher in the district. I don't have a prepared statement and I usually don't ever speak in public without one. But listening to the special education report tonight and then listening to the questions that some of you had, really kind of takes me back to when my own special needs child was in the district. I've worked tirelessly as a community member to try to create an awareness of students with disabilities, especially autism. And that's the type of question that I teach in our district. And I, when I listen to the questions about paraprofessionals and minutes and what that means, it just wants me, it just drives me to want to make sure that you do have a better understanding of our students with disabilities in the district because we are doing some phenomenal things. And I, Michael, am very proud of the work that many people have done and continue to do every day for our students. And I would just like to invite you to please come to my classroom. See what a paraprofessional does. Because like Mrs. Holm spoke about, that's the next contract. And we don't, we aren't fully staffed in many of our buildings. We don't have substitutes when those paraprofessionals' days are. But I just, I know Mrs. Worley came in last summer to visit our classroom and to get a better understanding. I have a cross-boundary classroom of students with fairly significant challenges in their life. So I just, I would love for you to just stop in someday. I realize that you all work for a living and it's difficult, maybe pretty big at my mom, but even if you just came in on a lunch hour, I really want to help you have a better understanding of special education in the district because as you can see from Mrs. Martin's report, we are doing some phenomenal things. And so again, I work at Chatham Elementary. I would love for you to come in and see our intensive structured program, KAX at Chatham Elementary. Thank you.
Mary, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else, anything they want to bring?
Okay, I just want to thank everybody. The board does value partnership with our teachers and our support staff. And we are all tightens. And we're parents, we're all working through this together, so appreciate all of it. So we'll call this meeting to an end here if I can get a vote or a motion approved.
Second?
I can't get in, I know crap, I'm expecting every attention on the board. My name's John Reaton, and I moved in as a community couple of years ago. I do have a child in the school system as well. I guess one thing that I certainly like to hear sometime, and you may not have it tonight, it just feels like the size of classrooms are getting pretty large for me as a parent, I'd say, as well. And I just, I don't know where we've been and where we're at. I guess I, sometimes, whether it's tonight or different time, I'd like to know how that is and how you think we compare to other schools that have a class size. One thing I'd bring up, I didn't, I was going to be setting up. I attended a board meeting for the first time ever. You know, I think it's, I was on a school board in a real small community one day and rarely had anybody come through. A lot of people get involved in that because it's, at times, a vengeful job, I can say that. It's, you usually hear a lot more complaints than you do positive comments when you're on a board. But like I said, I was in a school district of about 120 in high schools. So this is a whole different game here. But I just was curious on that. I've got one that's just in the fourth grade. I know I look a little old for a fourth grader. I do have one. I'm curious about that, though. Where have we been and where are we at on average classroom sizes today?
No, I'd be, as a matter of fact, I'd be able to name them. And I could actually show you.
I'd be great.
What we're doing, where we've been, where we're at, and what we've been.
Pretty good.
Can I touch on what he's asking for? I know that you sent out the letter that kind of outlined where our schools are. What that letter failed to show is how many of those classrooms are special education classrooms that only have a maximum amount of kids that are allowed compared to a Gen Ed classroom? So we've got 44 kids in a Gen Ed classroom, but those numbers are kind of skewed because in reality, you're taking the 15 that may be in a special education classroom and you're averaging those between two. And that's not really a good picture of what our classroom size is.
That should be separated.
They shouldn't.
So you're looking at an average instead of them?
You're looking at an average of the whole picture when that's not really what you should be looking at.
The website, I've, you know, the website, I'm just saying. I remember, I looked at it here while, I think it's the 20 or 21. My mind's been in larger classrooms.
All important issues to us.
Excuse me?
All important issues to us.
Very important, we are, we are working on. That's the most important asset in the whole country, is these kids.
Yes. Yep, and we're going to, we're going to get through it together.
Great.
John, Dawn, thank you. You all good? We've got a motion, a second, a little favor. The vote, tonight, thank you.